Mommy. Hold on a minute. Mommy, stop calling me over there. I'm busy, I'm busy, I'm busy, I'm busy.
Just go through the search.
Destiny, what hopes? Okay, Des- Destiny, come on. Okay. Okay, so come on. Sit down. Okay, sit.
All right, good evening. We will call the meeting to order. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. And Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Decorse.
Excused.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Excused.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wagner.
Here.
Thank you. We have no announcements, proclamations, or presentations this evening, no appointments. I don't believe we have any agenda modifications. So we will move on to public hearings. Tonight, we have a public hearing on the 2018 through 2023 Transportation Improvement Program. The City Council to conduct a public hearing to receive public comments and suggestions with regard to the proposed modifications to the 2018-2023 Transportation Improvement Program. And so I will call the public hearing open. We do not have a staff presentation this evening because staff has presented this a few times at our previous meetings. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the Transportation Improvement Program? Anyone at all? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and we will move on to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue. Those wishing to speak in are reminded to sign in on the form provided and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Skargans and I live off of 18th Street Northeast in North Auburn.
Do you have the full address?
935 18th Street Northeast.
Thank you.
My main concern is with the sex offender registry, Level 2 and Level 3 are required to give notifications. Why not Level 1? Because it came to my attention that someone I know is on that registry and now, before I even knew, he had contact with my daughter. And so I would like to try to see what we can do about getting even Level 1s notified, or the public notified of Level 1 offenders.
Okay. Commander Stalker, do you have any, anything that you could share with us on that? I don't think your microphone is on, Steve.
How about that?
There.
Only on, on, it is RCW-driven, so we cannot release information on Level 1s like we can on Level 2 and 3s. However, the information is actually out there, open to the public on the Internet.
It's not listed on the Internet.
So on King County's website, they list all their sex offenders on there. And so if there is one that you believe is a registered sex offender and is not on the website, then we can look into that for you. But all the registered sex offenders are supposed to be on the King County website.
Sorry, because I looked at King County, I looked at State of Washington and National, and he is not there.
Okay. Well, yeah, when we get done here, I'd be more than happy to speak with you in private.
Okay, thank you. And there was one other one. With the crime rate increasing in North Auburn, I was wondering about, like, community, uh, community watches.
Mm-hmm, block watches?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, is that something that we can start working with, with like King County Housing Authority? Or?
So you can actually do that through the Auburn Police Department. There are block watch programs and I'm sure Commander Stalker, while he's not in charge of that program, can provide you with some information on who to contact or get that, get the officer in contact with you that oversees that program so you can have a neighborhood meeting to start a block watch if there's interest in that?
There's a big, big interest in it.
Wonderful. We always love to have block watch programs in our neighborhoods because, as we've said before, our officers can't be everywhere, so you are the eyes and ears until an officer can get there. So we appreciate your interest in that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward, it's nice to see you again. Give your name and address for the record.
Mary Miller, 1802 I Street, Apartment B in Auburn. I'd like to say thanks for the quick follow-up that, on my concerns from last time. There have been some improvements already in certain areas that can be done right away. And also, I baked some cookies for you guys.
That's so sweet.
They're healthy cookies, they're gluten-free.
That is very, very sweet of you, Mary. Thank you.
Just to say thank you for.
That is, that is our goal. I'm glad we were able to, to get some of the issues worked for you as quickly as possible and...
Others will take time, but, you know, there's, there, he followed up right away and everything, so.
Great.
I really appreciated that.
Thank you so much and it's nice to see you and Lady again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone else at all? All right, we will close audience participation. We have no correspondence this evening, so we will move to ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committees' progress on assigned tasks, excuse me, and may give their recommendations to the City Council, if any. And our first ad hoc committee is Finance and that is, Councilmember Bob Baggett is the chair.
Thank you, Your Honor. As members of the Council Ad hoc Finance Committee, Councilmember Wagner and I reviewed the payroll vouchers and electronic deposits for approximately 2.2 million and claims vouchers and wire transfers for approximately 6 million for the periods June 1st to June 14th and June 19th respectively. And the committee recommends council approval of these expenses. I just wanted to make a note here that it should be noted that one of the reasons why this period has incurred high claims expenses is because many of our major projects were paid periodic progress payments for work already completed and approved by, for payment by your city staff. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And annual selection of deputy mayor, Councilmember Decorse is not here this evening. Councilmember Trout Manuel, do you want to provide a report this evening? Your microphone first, please.
We will be bringing it back to the council at study session next week.
Okay. The $20 tab fee, full spectrum of issues regarding the $20 car tab fee. Deputy Mayor Wells.
This evening?
This evening, the Transportation Board approved an extension so that we have some more time to study the issue and make reports back. Thank you.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Baggett.
I would like to speak on behalf of Councilmember Decorse, who is absent today down in Vancouver. And he said he would like to extend a thank you to Ingrid Gauv for her work and especially with the B Street construction coming up and the receipt of the bids that came very close to our engineering estimate. That's on his behalf.
Thank you very much. All right. We will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Wells.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, do I have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that one.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wells.
The consent agenda consists of the minutes of the June 5th regular City Council meeting, the claims and vouchers that Councilmember Baggett spoke to, and a public works project that I believe Councilmember Baggett spoke to, CP 1520, which is awarding the contract for the B Street Northwest Reconstruction Project, which is coming out of the sewer fund and coming out of the arterial fund, which will include ADA provisions, improved curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and street.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. All right, we have no unfinished business, we have no new business. We will move to ordinances and resolutions. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance number 6654, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, amending chapters 14.03, 17.04, 17.10, 17.12, 17.14, and 17.22 of the Auburn City Code relating to procedures for processing final plat approvals.
Thank you, do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Wells.
I move for the approval of ordinance number 6654.
Thank you, do I have a second? Councilmember Holman.
Second.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wells.
This is great for the city, great for our builders. It's going to allow us to streamline some of the processes for smaller developments and it also went through and changed some of the terminology, so we have an up-to-date ordinance.
Thank you, are there any questions? Councilmember Holman?
Not a question, just a statement. It was well discussed at last week's study session.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 6654, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Ordinance number 6655, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, amending section 18.68.030 and 18.68.040 of the Auburn City Code relating to procedures used in consideration of requests for rezoned land concurrent with requests for amendment of the comprehensive plan land use map.
Thank you, do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Wells.
I move for the approval of ordinance 6655.
Thank you, do I have a second? Councilmember Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Wells.
Once again, this is something very progressive, along with the previous ordinance, it's going to allow us to lower costs, cut down on fees and times so that when our builders have projects that are ready to go, it can be done a lot faster, but still maintaining the quality codes and restrictions and all of that that we have.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of ordinance number 6655, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5300, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, approving the 2018-2023 Transportation Improvement Program of the City of Auburn pursuant to RCW Chapter 35.77 of the laws of the City of Washington.
Thank you, do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Wells.
I move for the approval of Resolution 5300.
Thank you, do I have a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wells.
Earlier this evening, we had an opportunity for a public hearing and prior to this, we've studied it numerous times with our engineering and planning department during our study sessions. So we feel it's ready to go.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution number 5300, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5302, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington, approving the lodging tax grant disbursement recommendations by the Auburn Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Thank you, do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Wells.
I move for the approval of Resolution 5302.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wells.
This is going to allow us to use our lodging tax money to help with the Veterans Day Parade, which is one of the largest ones in the United States, help with Pet Palooza, which is probably the largest one in the United States, and a new event that grabs some of our younger people, which has made us a little bit legendary, which is our Tough Mudder event. And so it's exciting to see because using lodging tax money to draw people in for these great events seems like a very appropriate application.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution number 5302, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes. All right, we will move on to Mayor and Councilmember reports. At this time, the Mayor and City Council may report on their significant city-related activities since the last regular council meeting. Deputy Mayor Wells.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to attend last week the King County Board of Health up in Seattle and we spent a significant portion of the time talking about firearms surrenders, surrendering, and the systems that we need to reform so that all of the different jurisdictions and courts and whatever that deal with domestic violence are communicating together so that the firearms can be removed from those homes where there's domestic violence. This committee has been going for about a year and it's been led by one of our judges, Ann Levinson, who's retired, and she presented to us some very, very interesting information, which you have already heard, thanks to the quality leadership that Councilmember Trout Manuel has been providing. But each time we hear it, I think a little bit more of it sinks into my head, that women in the United States are 11 times more likely to be murdered with guns than women in other high-income countries. That when a gun is present, a woman is five times more likely to be murdered. And when an assault takes place on a women, woman with guns, they are highly likely to be very, very lethal. This is the thing that was new for me and I think that if we reflect back over the last couple of shootings that we've had in the United States, not looking at the ones in England and Paris and whatever, the, the majority of the mass shootings that we are having in the United States invol- the perpetrator was involved in some type of domestic violence. So this shows us that we really do need to make an emergency concerted effort to get those guns out at the time that it become, comes to our attention. It was interesting, but I was not surprised to hear that most of the time, they did a study and we asked if male domestic violence perpetrators had a gun, most of them lied. And so what we need to do is at the ti- we need to go to the home, serve the perpetrator, and then try to collect the firearms. Again, you may do something in Renton that you live down here, and so we have to do something across all the jurisdictions. Again, I want to commend Councilmember Trout Manuel for helping us with this and we formally asked Dana, our Director of Administration, if she could have a police officer and/or someone from our legal department start attending so that we can be on the edge of implementing what we're going to be doing through the rest of King County.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Councilmember Wagner.
On the 8th, I attended the Transportation Policy Board. It's organized by the Puget Sound Regional Council and it represents the federal money that comes to the four county region of Kitsap, Smolomish, Pearson, King. The, the main thing talked about was the, the estimate of the amount of money needed by 2040, 2040, to do the projects that all the cities have already identified, like the Transportation Improvement Program that we passed tonight, other cities have those and we add up all those costs. What we find is that we're $44 billion short, or $2 million a year, $2 billion a year short, and most of that is in cities and counties. So again, we have a problem that we need to think about different revenue sources. And the Transportation Policy Board had little enthusiasm for sales taxes and property taxes and carbon emission fees, but they did seem to endorse the idea of vehicle miles traveled fees, toll roads, and street maintenance utilities at the local level. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. On June 14th, we attended, I attended the Emergency Management Advisory Committee, better known as EMAC. This particular committee involves representatives from all over our Puget Sound region and King County. And it was a very short meeting, however, what they did determine is, I think they had a shortfall on their budget of about $3,600, which is not very much when you consider the millions of dollars involved in this endeavor. So they were able to make that up by someone volunteering to take it out of their funds. The big thing there was talking about community outreach and how they can improve the communications to the general public and let them know about what services are available and where people may turn in the event of an emergency or disaster. They've told us that, basically that, the, the big word here is not to just do it within the committee, but basically get the word out to everybody and we are going to be working with our representative on emergency management, Jerry Thorson, to consider what kind of outreach policies and procedures that he may want to employ so that our residents will know what, what to expect in the event of an emergency. They also hired a consultant to perform a gap analysis of the King County dams and to find out what the results might be from an emergency standpoint in the event of a collapse or an emergency of some type that might involve the dam. And with that, that was the completion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
You know, I didn't have one, but since Deputy Mayor Largo Wells brought that up about the surrender and the guns, that has been a, a real big issue with both of my committees, the regional law and justice, and also the domestic violence. They have come and they shared the, the same document and presentation as they did to Deputy Mayor Wells's committee. It is a real big issue, it's a big problem. The last domestic violence meeting that I had, we had a native tribe come to our meeting and they said that it's a real big issue within their tribal community and the women's are afraid. They do make the statement that their spouses have several guns and when they ask the perpetrator, they always seem to lie. Or they do return, uh, turn in one and they say that's all they have. They have gone to as far as finding out that some of them are turning them over to their immediate family members and they're holding them for them. So it is a real, a serious issue out there and it's growing. And as Deputy Mayor said, that there's, all the cities in this region that attend these meetings, they have an advocate in their committees and it would be nice to have our police officer or prosecutor attorney attend to those meetings because everyone else has one or the other at their committees. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, a few things this evening. First, last week, we received from the Office of Financial Management, the estimates for population in each city in the state of Washington. Last year, Auburn's estimate was 77,060 in residents and that's between King and Pierce Counties. This year, the numbers in King County are 69,060 and in Pierce County, 9,900, for a total of 78,960 people. We increased by 1,900 in just one year. So we are certainly on track to be over 80,000 next year. And that is the, the number that tips over for individual cities to have a place at the table for Puget Sound Regional Council as opposed to SCA appointing someone as an SCA representative. So I won't be surprised if we are over 80,000 in next year's OFM report out. And I will provide copies of this to all of the council members so that you have it as well. A few things that occurred in the last couple of weeks. On Wednesday, June 7th, I attended Cascade Elementary School. It was a visit by Governor Ensley as he is going around talking with different school districts about the needs. As we're all aware, the McCleary decision is required, there is a requirement for full funding by the state legislature this year. And so Governor Ensley is going around talking with different school districts about the needs within their districts and their communities. It was a very, very interesting, very enlightening meeting. We spoke with faculty, we spoke with PTA, we spoke with students. And I think Governor Ensley got a very good indication that there are some needs within our community, our faculty are very diligent and very passionate about the students that they teach and go above and beyond, but it is just not enough for sustainability as far as financially sustaining and some of the programs that could be cut if the funding were not there. So the following day, on Thursday, the 8th, I was back at Cascade Middle School for their honor society induction. It's always one of my favorite events during this time of year with, with all of the graduations and with all of the ceremonies. It's one of my favorites and I was asked to speak to those future, or those recipients of honor society status as well as the President's Excellence Awards. And we talked about what it means to stick with it and to continue forward in success. Also, on Saturday, the 10th, Councilmember Baggett, I'm surprised you didn't mention our, our class from Valley on civil disturbance, the Valley Civil Disturbance Unit, was held over at Renton City Hall and it was attended by several electeds from throughout the region as we were made aware of how elected officials can definitely get in the way of law enforcement in a civil disturbance if we are not aware of what our role should be and how we can help out in sit-ins, protests that turn violent, use of force when mine challenged protesters, locked-in sleeping dragon, use of lethal munitions, and communication between command teams and protesters. And the real information here for all of us is let law enforcement do their job. There are specifically roles that we sometimes are required to be involved in, but otherwise, let law enforcement do their job. We are not commissioned officers, we don't have the training that the law enforcement officers have. And so that was a very clear message, don't you agree, Councilmember Baggett?
I agree, I do.
Yes, thank you. On June 13th, Councilmember Wagner, as you're talking about the transportation policy and Puget Sound Regional Council, King County Executive Dal Constantine and I convened the Regional Transportation System Initiative Group and that was all of the mayors from King County, along with the executive and staff from each one of, of the cities and organizations. As we talk about the network of regional roads in King County and the fact that, as we all know, we are at a critical juncture, those roads in some cases are failing and it is a network. It is not any one individual city, it is not just unincorporated King County, but it's how do we get back and forth, how do we commute in our region? We know that the roads in, in many cases are in need of repair and it's not... We know that the roads, in many cases, are in need of repair, and it's not any one city, as I said, or the unincorporated areas, but these roadways are the critical backbone, and they're connecting the King County communities to each other, and also to our interstate system. And the funding strategy for the essential network has not been revised in nearly 30 years. So it no longer works, as we are very well aware, and so this group was convened to talk about what that regional network looks like, and does it include transit, or are we focusing on roads and bridges at this point in time? We agreed on the basic network of roads, and asked that other considerations be made and be sent back to the technical committee, which is the staff from our respective cities, and then there will be another meeting to be convened later this summer with more information to be brought forward, so I will keep you all posted on that. On Wednesday, June 14th, I was on hand to swear in two new police officers to the city of Auburn. Officers Johnson and Bemis joined Auburn Police Department, and they are very, very good new officers, and we look forward to great successes from each of them, and we look forward to more swearing ins in the future, correct Commander Stalker? Because right now, we have eight openings, seven or eight openings in our police department. So if you know of anyone who is interested in being a police officer, please send them our way. We have some new recruiting materials that I just viewed today. They are not live yet, but counsel, they will be coming forward at a study session for you all to see. There has been some great work done by HR and by the consulting firm that we hired to help with recruiting. On June 15th, we had our monthly City of Auburn and Chamber partnership meeting to talk about issues of concern for both the chamber and for the city. This month, we talked about the Leadership Institute, and what their new proposed format will be for next year, and also, we chatted a little bit about a road survey that the chamber did to determine from their membership what the best funding, or what the most favored, if you will, form of funding would be for the roads in the city of Auburn, and we will be bringing that survey forward to council. Surprisingly, there were a lot of good comments on there, and there was support for additional funding from either residents or businesses. So we'll bring that information forward to you at an upcoming study session. Also, on the 15th, want to welcome Comfort Inn's grand reopening. We did a ribbon cutting down there. The owner, Amon Gog, was very proud of the newly refurbished Comfort Inn. It's beautiful. We highly recommend, if you have anyone coming in town, that you check out all of the hotels in the city of Auburn, because we do have some very nice accommodations available. Right after that, I went to the first of four cruise inns. Unfortunately, the weather was not as great as we would have liked it to be, but at the former Big Daddy site, the Solid Rock Cruisers are hosting these cruise inns. We did have a couple, other than members of Solid Rockers, that did cruise in, and kind of weathered the mist and sometimes the downpour. So the next one will be on Thursday, July 15th, from 4:00 to 7:30, I believe, at, again, at the former Big Daddy site on Auburn Way South. I encourage you to attend. There were some great cars there, even in the rain, but there will be even more cars there when it's not, because most car aficionados are not going to bring out their nice cars in the rain, because it takes too long to get them cleaned up again. Also, that night, right after the cruise inn, was a neighborhood meeting at Trek Apartments. This was our first opportunity to sit down with members of that new community right across the street, and talk about what their issues and needs are within the community. We've had residents living downtown for years, for decades, but not as many in one location, and there will be more coming. So we wanted to find out, what are their needs? What are we missing out on? What are we doing that they may wish we did differently in the downtown core? And so, we will be addressing those issues moving forward. We will have other meetings with them. They liked the idea of having maybe quarterly meetings to talk over the issues, so we will be scheduling those. And then, a reminder that this week, on June 20th, is the first of our community picnics. This one will be at Game Farm Park, Picnic Shelter, and Amphitheater. So hopefully, all of the neighbors in that district, and we are going by the six police districts, that you will come out and join us, meet your police officers and firefighters, and have some burgers and hot dogs that will be flipped and cooked by police and fire. And on Thursday night of this week, the 22nd, at 5:30 at the Auburn Avenue Theater, we are going to be hosting a town hall on heroin and opioid, the epidemic. We will have a panel that includes Commander Stalker, who was on the King County Heroin and Opioid Task Force as Auburn's representative. We will have a representative from Valley Regional Fire Authority, Valley Cities Counseling, Dr. Stephen Anderson of MultiCare Auburn Medical Center, the Assistant Director of King County Department of Community and Human Services Behavioral Health and Recovery Division, Director Brad Feingood, and Auburn resident Keith Minar will also be there. We will have resource booths with Hope Plus Counseling, Sound Mental Health, Valley Cities Counseling, Battlefield Addiction, and Evergreen Treatment Services. So we encourage you to come out, hear from the experts in the field on what is going on in that arena, and how we might be able to fight the epidemic that doesn't take place just in Auburn, but it is nationally and internationally. So we want to, we want to get those conversations started in our city. And Friday, June 23rd, from 11:00 to 4:00, will be Kids Day at Lesgo of Community Campus. So we encourage all of the kids and families to come out. It's always a great event, and a huge thank you, and the kudos to Auburn Parks Arts and Recreation for the great job that they do in putting that event on. And one final thing, last Monday, there were some comments made at the study session about actions taken to exclude council members from meetings and events. I just want to go on the record as saying that our staff goes above and beyond. They work long hours for everyone. There is no place in this council chambers for campaigning, and I hope we can focus on the work of the city going forward. Mr. City Attorney, is there any need for an executive or closed session?
There is no need, I.
Thank you. We are adjourned.